I call the January 27, 2020 City Council Meeting to order. First up, we have committee reports and items of interest. Anybody have anything interesting? Betty?
I didn't say it was interesting.
It was items of interest. It better be a committee report.
Okay. Some things that constituents have been talking to me about. There is always the traffic problem, speeding, and the need for stop signs on East Amazon. People have asked if we're going to do anything about opening the walls on Keesey Square. And I don't know where that stands, but something I think we should be investigating also. And several people have asked me about why do we have two-hour time limits on, at Skinnerbutte Park, parking limits? Because if you're going to the park, you probably want to stay more than two hours. And the need for homeless shelter. Everybody knows probably that. I think we should try to have a homeless shelter downtown in the old LCC building, but a lot of people have said, why don't you do that? And every once in a while, someone asks me again, why can't you have a homeless shelter downtown? For two reasons. Because they think the people need a place, people who are on the streets, need a place to take a shower and to sit down. And also, people don't like transients hanging around, using the library for a shelter. Those are the things that I'm hearing about from constituents at the moment. Thank you.
Mike, I mean, Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much.
It's the evening.
I'm just thinking of this, and I want to ask it in the best way possible of our city manager. Can you, in one minute or two perhaps, brief us on your discussions with the county regarding some things I've read in the newspaper recently?
That's actually on my, that's my one item I'm going to share. So I can do it now, or I can do it when you come to me.
Okay, I'll wait, because, you know, wait till you're ready. But that was one thing I was interested in. Will we have an opportunity for questions at that time, too?
Sure.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that I went to the Poverty and Homeless Board Shelter Meeting this afternoon, and they're getting close to some small number of sites for shelter and navigation centers, so there could be some exciting news coming. I hope so. And, um, city manager, do you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, so I was going to just share exactly what Councilor Clark was asking about, because you saw that there was an op-ed in the newspaper, if you read it, from Commissioner Bozovich about the potential sighting of a permanent supported housing at the fairgrounds. And then you've been receiving a lot of emails because of that. So I thought I would just give you a little update on where we're at and what is happening at that site. So as you know, we're working really closely with the county. In fact, I don't know that we've ever worked better and faster with the county than we are right now. And we're working on citing a number of things. So as much as people say there's nothing happening, there's actually quite a lot going on. We're, we're close to considering a sighting of a 75-bed low-barrier shelter. We're also looking for a site for a behavioral kind of crisis center. And they're consistently looking for citing for the permanent supported housing. The TAC report calls for 350 units. We have 50 of those that are being currently constructed on MLK. And we have a team of staff that are looking at a number of other sites. And one of the sites, the Naval Reserve Site, is actually on that list, and so is the fairgrounds. So what's happening right now is the fairgrounds have been identified as the best location for this particular grant that they are applying for that's due on February 5. That's my understanding of it. And what I've always heard is it's not really either or, it's kind of an and, that they need potentially both sites. If we want to hit that 350, we may need to be looking at all of them. So the Naval Reserve Site is, is not off the table. It's not a, I think the issue is that in order to meet the timing that they need, they need some certainty around that that site will work and that the zoning and all of that will work. And they felt like the fairgrounds represented the best opportunity of that. The Naval Reserve Site is clearly something that we can, we can continue to talk about, and you may want to make a decision to partner with them and make that happen. So that's kind of where we're at. It was, it was presented in a way that made it sound like we were, we were not committing, and that's, I would say that that's not accurate. We're very committed to the 350. As you know, we've committed to a 50-50 partnership.
I got a question.
Thank you.
Councilor Clark?
It was presented to me that there were a number of issues with those that had concerns about the fairgrounds as that site. Number one was that county staff had presented that as the logical option. Number two, that there may be a majority of commissioners interested in doing that. But then number three was that we were, we were aiding in that direction with our, not unwillingness, but just how much time it was taking us to interact there. That was what I had heard someone say to me, so that's why I had the question about that. I'm glad to know that's not the case. I'm glad to know that we're working so well with them and that that option is fully on the table. I would say, as Eugene residents, I certainly hope we don't give away part of the fairgrounds, because that's land that's landlocked and never comes back. And we just make the fairgrounds less. So I, when we have the other option right next to it, I certainly hope that the commissioners don't do that. And what can you share with me? You just mentioned looking at options for locations on the 75-bed low barrier. Can you share those location options with me?
I prefer not to do that publicly. We're, we're trying to be really thoughtful about whether they're the right options before we come public, and we're not there yet. So we've been kind of narrowing, making sure we have all the right information, and that the sites that we're looking at can serve all the needs that the neighborhoods included and that the councilors are included in that conversation from the wards that they're in. And we're just not quite there yet, so it'll be soon.
Can I take as for granted that since I haven't spoken with anyone about it, that this is not in Ward 5?
Correct.
Hmm. That's interesting. I had thought it, I had heard someone mention that it may-
Maybe I, I want to just refer to a map and make sure that I'm correct about that. Yeah.
We can maybe talk more about it. But I wanted to do this publicly so that everybody has a chance to understand this as quickly as possible.
Correct.
When you're talking about this sighting of the 75-bed, and you're talking about doing it in the potential locations you are, how quickly do you hope to see that operational? In other words, how much conversation is going to take place about where?
I think that's part of what we're trying to determine right now. So depending on the site and how, what we've learned from the focus groups, I haven't gotten the information from all of that yet, will determine, I think, how much outreach. But we're, we're shooting for this year. I mean, it's a, it's a get it open this year.
But is this a, is this a one month, two months from now, or before next winter?
Before next winter.
Okay. Then we talk about later? Thank you.
Counselor Cyret?
Thank you. So yeah, I kind of felt that the opinion piece was trying to blame us for some reason, that we somehow put the county in the position of having to determine if this site was going to work because we weren't taking action quickly enough. And I just want to say that I feel that the county really has the bulk of the responsibility to work on providing permanent supportive housing, since they are the health and human services provider for the entire county and the city is not. So it, and it's being framed as, well, we shouldn't do it here, we need to do it at the naval site, and the city needs to agree to that, so we're not forced to do it over here, which I don't think is a valid argument. But from what I'm hearing you say, they could decide all on their own whether or not to cite on this county property, and we don't need to be involved in that decision.
Yeah, there's no decision for the county, for you to make in that decision at all.
Thank you. And, you know, I do think this is a decision for the county to make, but since other opinions have been shared, I will just say, you know, one of the arguments that was in that op-ed and that we've seen in some of the emails is that this is an inappropriate place to put housing, because it will have conflicts with the fairgrounds. I lived two blocks from the county fairgrounds for two years, and lots of people live right across the street. It is surrounded by housing. So I really don't understand how people are making an argument that having some more housing in the area is going to somehow create undue conflicts. It is in a sea of residential areas as it is, so, thank you.
Anybody else? It's time for the public forum. We have switched things up a bit, so my intro is a bit longer. Bear with me. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or on, or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have two minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your, give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light and a beep indicate the end of two minutes. Tonight marks the beginning of several changes we are piloting to the public forum process, which we hope will result in a more effective and equitable experience for everyone. In addition to the change to two-minute rounds per speaker, we are shuffling the names of the speakers so that they will be called in a random order. Also, public forum will be limited to 90 minutes total. If the number of speakers approaches or exceeds the time we have allotted for the forum, we encourage you to consider abbreviating your remarks so that the maximum number of speakers can be heard. I will read two names. The first name I call is the person who is up to speak. To help expedite the flow of speakers, we ask that the second person take the on-deck chair to the left of the speaker's podium. In order to maintain a safe and respectful environment for the expression of all points of view, I will enforce the rules outlined in our code of conduct, including no disruptive or disrespectful language or noises, no clapping, cheering, or booing, and no bags, briefcase, or backpacks allowed up on the testimony table or speaker's podium. Willful refusal to comply with these rules or to disobey my requests for order may result in removal of the individual or group from the council meeting or a temporary suspension of the meeting. We do encourage a silent show of hands in support of testimony. So we're trying this out for six months, and then we'll talk about it again. Don't choke up on the microphone, this is a pretty good distance. And if you bring us any handouts, they go in that basket up there. And watch for that yellow light, because it's time to wrap up. So, we only have 15 people tonight, so everybody gets two minutes.
He's out of order.
You're really out of order. I would like to add you to the list, but that's not the feeling I'm getting from my colleagues. First up is Thomas Hirta. We practiced, but I'm not sure I'm there yet.
Wow, first, thank you. Thomas Hirta, Ward 9. Cutting the public forum short is not pro-democracy. This is already a space experienced as hostile, insufficient, or irrelevant by many folks I've met on the campaign trail. It doesn't even allow for people to cheer their peers on positively, something Eugenians always loved to do when I grew up here. I hope to change that as mayor, because inclusion is about integrity more than it is about censoring or compressing the views you find pesky. Think about the Eugenians with disabilities, who might not be showing up because of the expectation of total silence. Surely, this isn't choosing kindness. And in a time when we've asked council to listen to our concerns more, this six-month plan in the mayor's reelection year has scrambled our speaking order, capped our forum, and taken away a third of our time. Intentions aside, council has made a smaller commitment to the community, not a greater one. On the issue of time, think of people with disabilities. If that's too abstract a construct, concept to conjure, there's one standing before you now. As an educator, I saw the power of a disability accommodation in making a neurodivergent young person feel like their unique opinions matter, and they have a fair shot to express them. High-stakes testing is stressful, but so is high-stakes public speaking. In 2019, our 4J school district did not have a disability accommodation for any portion of the application process to fill vacancies, which they did twice. That's simply not okay when we pick leadership for 16,500 students. I met with Superintendent Balderas twice, and then he promised me that there would be an accommodation publicized for future vacancies. That's progress. It's not hard to do, it's not a divisive partisan issue, and it's worth doing in any space where we want to live up to our values. I hope council will allow for a disability accommodation here that allows 60 more seconds and maybe text-to-speech functionality for self-identified Eugenians with disabilities. Think about how it feels to have your time cut down in the middle of trying to make a substantive point about how your community does not-
Apologize, I forgot to call the, the second person on deck. Eliza Koschinsky, followed by Richard Self.
Good evening. My name is Eliza Koschinsky, and I live in Ward 1. And I am not here tonight to talk about accessory dwelling units, though I'm a little disappointed that conversation will be continuing. I am looking forward to the work that's going to be done to finish the CAP 2.0, the Climate Action Plan 2.0. CAP 2.0 is really looking at how we as a community and the plan for us as a community to reduce our emissions. However, much of the success of the CAP 2.0 is dependent on existing plans from entities like the city itself. Part of the climate recovery ordinance in 2019 was, excuse me, part of the climate recovery ordinance was that the city, city operations would be climate neutral, be carbon neutral by 2020. We will be buying offsets, I'm under the impression, to meet that goal. In 2017 and 2018, we produced facility analysis and fleet climate action plans to help the city reduce its carbon emissions. However, I've noticed that a notable amount of money for those plans is in the unfunded needs assessment. As we move forward with trying to figure out how we're going to meet these goals that we passed, I would be very interested in receiving an update on where we are in progress with those two plans for reducing the city's emissions. If we are going to, have we accomplished any of these items? Where are we? When are they scheduled for? Have we finished our fleet purchasing policy? What progress have we made on these plans in the past two to three years? Obviously, we need good plans in order to achieve our goals as a city, but we also need to be sure that we're doing the things that are in the plans to achieve those goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Self, followed by Kira Elliott.
Good evening, council. I'm Richard Self with House Everyone, and also representing Ward 9 forever. That's House Everyone, H-O-U-S-E. I am here because apparently Wednesday, you're having a work session regarding a CBD G block grant to obtain the old LCC building. From what I'm reading, you're going to, you have a vision of using it for multi-income, multi-income quote-unquote housing. And I'm questioning, rather than being accusatory, whether that just means more high-priced housing, which is unobtainable by most, even the working poor. We have enough of that. What we need most is income-based, affordable housing for the most vulnerable, as well as those elderly, disabled, and the working poor. And you, raising the AMI to include, to make that so. CBD G block grants are solely for this purpose, for low, low income and moderate income, and that doesn't mean folks making $100, $200,000 a year. We have enough vacancies of that. So, when considering this Wednesday, I submit you use the block grant better than it is intended, rather than make, having another moneymaker downtown. Also, the Olive Ranch with Thorns is coming out. While PSB Housing and sites for low-barrier shelter are being discussed, the campsite at the federal courthouse will be swept at 11:30 tomorrow.
Thank you. Kira Elliott, followed by Jerry G.
Hello, my name is Kira Elliott, and I live in Ward 1. I'm a school representative from Churchill High School for the Period Eugene Movement. Period is a global organization started in Portland that works to fight period poverty and stigma through service, education, and advocacy. Period poverty is defined as the lack of access to menstrual hygiene products. This is something many menstruators face due to cost or other factors that bar them from such necessities. In this city, there are students, workers, adults, et cetera, who suffer from period poverty. We first aimed to remedy this problem in our own schools, where we successfully influenced the 4J school board, which then influenced the Bethel School District, to pass policy to ensure there'd be free pads and tampons in all women's and gender-neutral bathrooms in the middle and high schools. This was only the start for us, and Period Eugene is here tonight to focus on the ways in which our homeless and poor are harmed by the lack of free and available products in our own town. We are here stating that our city-owned buildings do not provide menstrual products, and that is an issue. The damage this does to Eugene citizens is, quite honestly, outrageous. As I'm sure you all are aware, Eugene weeds the country in per capita homelessness, and as of November 3, 2019, we had over 2,100 unhoused people in our city. These are the people who most likely rely on the city's public restrooms the most, and a significant number of these, this population has a period. To some, this may sound silly. Menstruation isn't often on the minds of those who don't have one or who have easy access to menstrual products. But those facing period poverty can sometimes look to cardboard or even trash to stop the natural bodily function half our world population faces. What we are asking here tonight is easy. Menstrual products should be freely provided in all Eugene city bathrooms for all menstruators to use, homeless or not. There are many public accommodations that state that it shall be unlawful for public accommodations practices for there to be any discrimination based on certain things that may influence someone who has unwed access to period products. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry G, followed by Valerie Harris. You're up. Jerry G, not you, Jerry G.
He left. Next.
Let's go through this list, I'll see what I can do. Valerie Harris, followed by Stephanie McLaughlin.
I'm Valerie Harris, Ward 5. I'm a mom of three, grandma of five, and Airbnb super host. I appreciate the council's tireless efforts to continuously improve Eugene. I moved here from New York about five years ago. I'm an engineer at a local privately-owned company. I rented for the first three and a half years and fell in love with Eugene. The fun-loving people, collegiate allegiance, running along the Wilama and beautiful long summers. Since this now is going to be my forever home, I bought a lovely home, and I've started renting it between my kids' visits and my grandkids. I have two key points to make tonight. One, since 2017, there's been 102% increase in the number of senior hosts, people like me, over 60, using Airbnb. And in fact, this is the growing, the largest growing demographic of Airbnb hosts. Instead of going after large corporations, you're going after people like me. This is targeting middle-class senior women in a town that does not regulate any other businesses and neighborhoods, or long-term rentals. It's just not right. The other key issue is the impacted neighbors have issues such as noise, safety, and strangers in the neighborhood. And these are problems for long-term rentals and other neighborhood businesses, which are not regulated and can and should be fixed with the current laws. New laws will not fix a problem if you're not enforcing the current laws. Additionally, enforcing new home-sharing regulations is expensive and takes police away from real problems. Last year, in the city of Santa Monica, California, it was estimated it would cost nearly half a million dollars to staff a full-time anti-home-sharing task force for just one year. And in that year, they caught only one homeowner, and they were able to recover just $2,500 in fine. So in summary, enforce the current regulations, don't make new ones.
Thank you. Stephanie McLaughlin, followed by David Ivan Petioni.
Hello again, Stephanie McLaughlin, Ward 2, neighbor of one of Eugene's thoughtful short-term rental hosts. I'm here first to thank the council for assembling the ad hoc committee to examine closely and thoughtfully the factors that led to proposed regulations. It is good governance to allow equal voice to stakeholders who stand to lose or gain through individual entrepreneurship and the voices of common concern that brought us together over this subject. Also, I want to thank you for bringing local Airbnb hosts together for a worthy cause. In some cases, it's our livelihood, and this turns out to be a rather lovely bunch of people. Eugene has been my family's home for multiple generations, but I myself moved to Portland from 2016 to 2018. I wanted a chance to live in our, our state's largest city. I lived in inner northeast, but like any city, it had issues, and it would have been a tough time settling anywhere in late 2016. Making new friends was a challenge. The stabbing that occurred at the MAC station, the one that is now in courts, was my MAC station where I lived in Portland. And the apartment complex was surrounded by bottle returns and the chronically homeless. It was a difficult scene to navigate for a suburban house mom. Hate speech was also everywhere. It felt like the city was an angry hive with too many bees to live together in peace. The best takeaway from those two years was that I love Eugene and want to be a part of curating its future. The second best was, were the friends I made who shared their stories and homes and showed me the various ways they afforded better neighborhoods. I resolved to transition from renter back to owner again and to return to the one place I consider home. I think what we want to do here is to get ahead of concerns of rapid growth appearing on the horizon. We want thoughtful strategies and diverse housing supply, and no one type of housing or hospitality provider can meet the needs of all travelers. Thank you.
Thank you. David Ivan Petioni, followed by Joshua Corn.
I, I just wanted to address the council and if there were any people who weren't I kind of interrupted in a kind of unharmonized way. But the question that I had was, the man was talking about improvements to the library and changes as to the policy with late books. And I didn't understand that that meant books for children. I'm not real sure about what exactly the wording was that this person was talking about. But I followed Emily's advice, and I went and I talked to him, and he calmed my fears. He said that, no, people cannot just keep taking books out and never returning them. So that was enough for me. To me, books are like a map. You know, you get this map that leads you through different terrain, and if you, if it is a good book, you get a real treasure at the end. Well, I grew up in Argentina, and it was illegal, and not just in the matter of legal sense, but you could get killed for having books on leftist kind of philosophies. And so it was really good when, when I came to the US and was able to- And so it was really good when I came to the U.S. and was able to access books a lot more easily. That comment Mike made about Japanese death poetry intrigued me, too. I'm going to check out that. And yeah, a good book can't be compared with another good book saying this one's better or not. I mean, if somebody does a good job, then it should be that way and shouldn't be hierarchized. At the library, I tried to donate a book by a sign.
Thank you. Joshua Corn, followed by Catherine Dunn.
Joshua Corn, South Eugene. Continuing on about 5G infrastructure, today I wanted to address the council about the importance of the backbone of fiber optic networks in this build-out that they're trying to do. And I'm appreciative of the ongoing court case that the mayor is part of and the city is part of with other cities in Oregon, and hopefully that will be successful. But I want to emphasize the importance of our city owning the fiber optic networks and holding that ownership, because these telecoms want to dominate in this quote-unquote "new era" of 5G telecommunications infrastructure. And in order to do that, they have to capitalize and monopolize on the fiber optic networks. And it's really important for us to realize the limitations that that gives our future, because as far as I'm concerned, and some of us are concerned, the fiber optic networks are actually the future of this, the new technology and the new era. And there's a big argument to say that a lot of this 5G stuff will fail, because a lot of it's just starting to be tested, and there's a lot of failures happening. And there's a lot of failures on environmental impact statements, and environmental assessments are not being filed. And, you know, these are recourses that you guys do have as a city to go back against the telecoms. So please take that into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Dunn, followed by Awen Soran.
Hello. I'm Catherine Dunn, Ward 5. I don't even know what to say. This issue about short-term rentals is so complex. I've been doing a lot of research. Oh, my gosh. I feel for you and the Ad-Hoc Committee, but hopefully we can all work together to figure this out. My opinion is that everybody's doing fine, in my opinion. I have two short-term rentals. They're both in multifamily properties. One's one side of a duplex. The other one is one unit in a seven-unit apartment building. One's in Ferry Street Bridge, one's in South Eugene. I'm a real estate agent, but for longer than that, I've been a real estate investor. That's my retirement plan. I'm just approaching 60, so I'm kind of in that group that was just spoken about. And I started my first Airbnb five years ago, and just about a month and a half ago, I opened a second one. But this is just a very small number of the actual units I have in my portfolio. Very tiny. I actually have about 30 properties, 30 doors, and two of them are short-term rentals. So when you're looking at non-owner-occupied properties, it might be helpful to really understand who the owners are. Because in this market, we've gone up and down in our economy. It's been hard to make ends meet through all these years. I am an entrepreneur. I've always owned my own business since I left college. So having the ability to have an STR and have it make some additional income finally is what I'm putting toward my retirement plan. So I know there are others like me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to let you introduce yourself, because I don't want to mess it up. Followed by Rowan.
My name is Awen Soran. I'm in Ward 8. On December 23, over 100 community members gathered outside this building, out in the plaza, to give visibility and closure for the 32 people who died unhoused last year. At the vigil, we learned of at least five more names. And we are here today because in 2020, at least three people have died on the streets this year. One of them actually died in the last three hours. Tonight, we are giving visibility to the lives and deaths of Joseph Middleton, Kipling Madjar, and the woman we lost today, who has yet to be identified. Joe is a longtime community member who died about 10 blocks south of here, and Kipling was found dead in Washington Jefferson Park. Currently, an EPD Guardian trailer is surveilling Washington Jefferson Park. We do not know if the camera was there at the time of Kipling's death, but we wonder if that camera's presence could have prevented his death. Is the camera there for the safety of the vulnerable community members in the park, or is it there to further criminalize them? Tomorrow, the camp at 8th Mill will be swept by EPD and the city. We know that the people camping there have nowhere else to go. We will not let this housing crisis continue to be addressed only for the benefit of business and property owners. A 75-bed shelter is not enough. We also need to look at how our taxpayer money is going to police surveillance and rousting, leading to arrests and citations, and overcrowding the jail. We are here tonight with three flowers to represent Joe Kipling and the woman. As stated at the vigil, we mourn the dead, and we will fight like hell for the living. I don't know how many more days it will be before the number of people who have died on the streets will outnumber the flower boxes sanctioned by our city downtown. We will look upon those flower boxes as the beautiful gravesites of our neighbors and friends that will never get graves of their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Rowan, followed by Nabika Rayamaji.
Rowan, talking about 5G. Following up on the last time I talked, thanks to Councilor Evans' help and follow-through, I was able to locate the case. He gave me the case number, and I went to the website for the Ninth Circuit and saw that the case, oral arguments will be heard two weeks from today. So the next time the city council's meeting, the oral arguments will have been made. However, the case will not be decided until the end of the year. So that leaves me with my concern of, well, what happens in the meantime? And so what Josh said earlier about recourse with NEPA letters, apparently several, according to the scientists for wiredtech.com site, several FCC attorneys were consulted on this strategy that cities can take to file a letter, it's called a NEPA letter, that can say that the company failed to have, their application is incomplete, and therefore they must, you know, stop what they're doing until that application is complete. So now I will be looking into that more, so that next time I may have more to say about that. Because my, and I'm motivated, again, by my health concern and also by the other people I know who are also motivated by this. So I will be researching this more and be getting back to you on that. And that's all I can think of for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to let you introduce yourself also, followed by Violet Neal.
Hello, everyone. I'm Nabika Rayamaji, and I am a vice president of Period Eugene. Period is a nonprofit organization founded in Portland to educate, advocate, and provide products for menstruators in our community. We are constantly working to make sure people who lack access to period products are provided with this basic need and a right through drives and policy being passed. Many of you might have heard of our achievement of passing a policy in the 4J School District that makes it required to have free menstrual products in all women's and gender-neutral bathrooms in high schools and middle schools. We are here today to ask that a policy be passed in the city of Eugene where not just school bathrooms, but all public places have free and accessible period products. Eugene has an extremely high homeless rate, and it is one of our city's main concerns. This automatically means that period poverty is an extremely big issue as well. Period poverty is when homeless and low-income residents, including youth, have to resort to trash, cardboard, and other unhygienic items to use as menstrual products instead of clean and safe pads or tampons because of their high prices. Many times, people experiencing period poverty have to pick products over food. If we want to help reduce the homeless population, let's look at what is stopping them from getting back on their feet, the lack of basic necessities. Menstruators do not have the option to have periods. It happens no matter how much you don't want it. This means when you need menstrual products, right? That means when you need menstrual products, you need them right when you need them. When people who live off dollars a day have to spend a large proportion on that, on menstrual products, we really can't be expecting to decrease our homeless population, because that simply doesn't make sense. When it comes to water in public places, we do not compromise. When it comes to toilet paper in public places, we do not compromise. But when it comes to menstrual products, why do we act if it's a luxury item when we need it just as much as anything else? We need action now. Thank you.
Thank you. Violet Neal, followed by Augustine.
Hello. My name is Violet Neal. I live in Ward 1, and I'm a sophomore at Churchill High School. I'm also the policy director for Period Eugene. Some of our recent work includes getting policy passed with the 4J School Board for free menstrual hygiene products. In December, we stood outside the Eugene Holiday Market and raised almost $700 from citizens who engaged and supported our message through our period products drive, that we then used to buy over 4,000 menstrual hygiene products for 15th Night, the amazing organization here in town for homeless youth. We have been busy, but not so busy as not open our eyes and start talking about the long-running issue that is not having menstrual hygiene products available in this city's public restrooms. Period products should be free, and that is a fact. Regardless, they are not, and we live in a world where that is universal. However, we understand the same sentiment could be used for toilet paper. The difference between those two necessities is that when any person uses a public restroom, they're able to use free toilet paper. No one would ever argue that having toilet paper in a bathroom stall is unnecessary, so why should the same be said for period products? This is an issue that affects many citizens of this city, including our homeless populations, who rely on these restrooms most. I lived in this city my entire life. I've attended the 4J School District since kindergarten, and I've seen the costs lack of access can have in this city. It has passed the time of mistreating menstruators, especially poor and homeless menstruators, simply because they cannot afford to bleed. It is long past time for putting these issues on the back burner and waiting for change to happen. Menstruators come in all genders, and we need to start giving these citizens a feeling of equity and importance in this world by the small act of having a product available for an uncontrollable human function. We as Period Eugene urge you to listen to what we have said tonight, and hope you feel the need and importance of looking into and changing the lack of menstrual hygiene products in the city-owned public buildings and restrooms in town. This is a necessity, and we have many others in the city supporting us who want this to happen. Although they are not here tonight, they are behind us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Augustine.
You're the last one signed up, so speak. Just wait, please. Go ahead.
My name is Augustine, and I live in Ward 1. Last month, hundreds gathered outside City Hall to commemorate the death of dozens of members of our community who died due to houselessness in 2019. We mourn the loss of friends and family members while making a single and steadfast demand: no more deaths in the streets. Tonight, I'm holding three roses to commemorate the three community members who have died due to houselessness this year. I would like to take a brief moment of silence for Joseph Middleton, Kipling Madjar, and the third individual who passed just hours ago, who has not been identified yet to the In 2019, the city of Eugene spent $125 million on public safety. Whose safety? If spent more responsibly, could dozens of lives have been saved? The city is adding $8 million to the public safety budget. We are adding 40 cops to Eugene Police Department. A new city hall could cost up to $30 million. With a new excise tax on developments, the city will generate just a half a million dollars for affordable housing. And the county and city continue to go back and forth on a low-capacity shelter. But we're not spending enough money to provide rapid, dignified, and affordable housing solutions. This is a humanitarian crisis, and we need to be treating it like one. To fund the police, block gentrifying development projects, tax business and landlords, and fund solutions, I'm concerned that a low-capacity homeless shelter may be too little, too late. 75 beds is not enough when there are thousands on the streets and countless renters one or two paychecks away from losing their housing.
Thank you. Has Jerry G. come? If you would like to let Mr. Jackson talk in your place, I'll allow that, but only one of you.
Councilman standing, city manager, thank you. Eric Jackson, currently protesting in front of the federal courthouse with 35 others, including Jerry, at my right side since September of last year, 2018, not 19. Tonight is two days before the point-in-time count, the federal standard for what the money's coming from HUD is. And in that, the point-in-time count is done, and people are looking, housed individuals are looking for homeless people in various under-three spots the entire day on the 29th going into the 30th. This city, I don't know if it's systematic and on purpose, or it just happens to coincide with all of my court dates, that I have trials and I'm not present, and now the point-in-time count. This city is moving 35 people that are protesting the behaviors of the city. At the federal courthouse, a band of people that have been together for over 15 months lied to be brought out to Highway 99 and kicked out once they got there. This is atrocious. I can't believe how sick to my stomach I am tonight. For the first time in the entire two years that I'm fighting this, I am disgusted. I've got 35 people sleeping that have to be packed and out in the rain today and tomorrow. It's been raining all day, all night, and all week in the rainforest in Eugene, Oregon. And it's absolutely ridiculous that this is going to happen. The point-in-time count is on the 29th into the 30th. We're being evicted at 11:30 a.m. on the 28th, and I have another 100 to 200 people stroll through my camp that are homeless every single day and sit down and have lunch or talk to us. And you guys are blowing that. You're completely blowing it. You're absolutely taking people that are findable, and you're putting them somewhere that they can't be found immediately. It's the most absurd thing I've ever heard of. And I've never finished early. Drop the mic.
Thank you. This concludes our public forum. I appreciate everyone coming. Do councilors have comments? Councilor Cyret?
All right. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming and test-driving our new public forum format. So just some responses to a myriad of things. So the changes to public forum were not initiated by the mayor. These were driven by city council. We are certainly required to provide accommodations for anyone with a disability should our format create a barrier to their participation. We didn't discuss that specifically when we talked about public forum, and we've not discussed it specifically for however our public forum format was, but that's something we would want to do and are required to do by law. And even with our changes based on, you know, some limited surveys of other cities, our public forum is longer and more accommodating than many other cities in Oregon. So I don't believe we are being undemocratic by trying some modifications to our basic format. Regarding the Lang Community College Building and Community Development Block Grants, buildings built with those grants cannot be managed as a for-profit and have to serve at least 51% of the units must serve populations making 80% of the area's median income and below. I don't have much more to say on that, because we were having a work session about that later. I'm very thrilled to have the Period Eugene advocates come and speak to us. Congratulations on your accomplishment with the school districts. That was great to read about in the paper, and I'm not surprised you're here advocating that we adopt similar policies. We are currently preparing our annual budget, and I wonder if the city manager would consider preparing a cost estimate for honoring the requests that they've made, so that council might consider how we might go about doing that. I think you make some extremely valid points, and I would absolutely support such a policy. And I appreciate you coming here to advocate on for it.
Thank you. Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, Counselor Cyret basically covered a couple of issues I would...
I would just reinforce that our intentionality in using Community Development Block Grant funds on the LCC Building shows the intention that that building be used for low-income housing and not for market-rate housing. And also, with regard to Period Eugene, I appreciate you coming. What was most persuasive for me was the notion if we are providing toilet paper, then there's no reason why we shouldn't also provide sanitary products as well. So as I said, I would like to know how easy it would be for us to implement providing those as well as toilet paper and paper towels and other paper products.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody coming, especially those who spoke about short-term rentals. I think it's important for all of us to see the different nature of folks who are owning short-term rentals in our community. I think that the working group will be very educational when they come out with that. I'm looking forward to all the data that we'll see with this process. But I think that putting a human face on everybody who in our community that we can that works with this helps us understand it better. I see the two gentlemen who spoke on 5G this evening, and we're not supposed to interact with the people that, you know, this isn't a conversation that's, you guys talk, we listen, we talk, everybody else listens. But I'm interested, I wonder out loud whether or not you or others, you know, speak to the E-Web board. And head nods would tell me that or not, I bet. Looks like some maybe, all right. Because what we learned, of course, I'm going to just say it out loud again, most all 5G transmitters are put on poles owned by E-Web, and commissioners can decide not to rent the space. So if you've got three commissioners that don't want to rent the space anymore, none of them go up? So I just would encourage you to communicate with your E-Web board member.
Thank you. Any other councilors wish to speak? Thank you, everyone, for coming. I agree that if we supply toilet paper, we should supply menstrual products. And I appreciate you coming to tell us that because when I was your age, nobody would have been that brave. I'm glad that we got to hear Mr. Jackson's comments, and I know that his very long protest often has to move, but it does seem pretty bad timing to send a whole bunch of homeless people into a place where they can't be found. I don't know if we could put it off a day, but that would be...
Over.
No talking. Thank you for coming. We meet again on Wednesday at noon, and we will be talking about urban reserves and the old LCC Building at 1059 Willamette. And that concludes our meeting. Thank you.